I turned off one. Like you to build me an arc. Okay. Good evening and welcome to tonight's Monroe City Council meeting. This is the regular business meeting for Tuesday, October 24th, 2023. The time right now is 7:00 PM. Going to ask that our clerk, Wykoff, please go ahead and call the roll.
Thank you, Mayor. Council members present and establishing a quorum are council members Ultra, Kenny Hanford, Davis, and Scarborough.
Thank you. And earlier today, received an email from council member Fisher. He said he would not be here this evening. And also, we had heard at an earlier meeting that council member Gamble would not be here. So unless there's objection, we'll consider the two as excused absences. Okay, so no objection. We'll go ahead and move on to the first item in the agenda this evening. That'll be the Pledge of Allegiance. I'm going to ask council member Fulcher to please lead us on the pledge. Thank you. Thank you. The next item that we have on our agenda this evening is a proclamation for Kindness Week. And before I read this in, I'm just going to say a few words. Our Monroe School District Director Molly Barnes approached me probably about a month and a half or more ago. I think it was at the parade, so probably August, and asked if we would be interested in adopting a proclamation for Kindness Week. The Monroe School District is doing something similar. And I said, well, yes, that sounds like a great idea. So Kindness Week, according to the proclamation, is in November. So I'll be doing this this evening since this is our last meeting, where I could do something like this for, before November. I'm going to invite Director Barnes to come forward and say a few words, and then I'll read this into the record. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. It's different to be on this side, but it's good to see you all tonight, and it's good to be here. The main, just to give you a little bit of background, the main reason that I began doing this for the Monroe School District was just wanting to bring unity between our schools. There's been so much that's happened in the last few years that's caused division. And bringing people together is one of the things that is important to me. So in doing, in doing this and coming up with Kindness Week, I thought, how amazing would it be if our students could see our community rally around behind them in this cause for kindness? How amazing would it be for them to see us demonstrate this, right? Because they're always watching us, they're learning from us. And we all need reminders. We all get caught in the day-to-day life of everything that that entails. But being nice to people, it doesn't cost anything, but it can make all the difference in the world. And I picked this particular week in November because November 13th is World Kindness Day. And so I thought, how amazing to start off the school week with World Kindness Day for Kindness Week. So that's just a little bit of the background of why this is here. It's a very small, small piece of so many other things that can be done to just remind us to respect one another, that we all deserve human dignity, and that we're all neighbors and we live here together. And the kinder we can be to one another, the better Monroe is to live for everybody. So yeah, I think that's all I've got. Thank you so much for your consideration on this. And I'm really excited to see what this can do. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Director. So I want to go ahead and read this into the record. Proclamation recognizing the week of November 12th to the 18th, 2023 as Kindness Week. Whereas World Kindness Day is an international holiday that was formed in 1998 to promote kindness throughout the world. And whereas this presents us with the opportunity to reflect upon and model one of the most important and unifying human principles. And whereas both large and small acts of kindness have the potential to promote and diffuse this crucial quality that brings people of every kind together. And whereas the Monroe, the city of Monroe seeks to highlight the good deeds in our community and focus on the positive influence and common thread of kindness that binds us all together and keep and helps promote a feeling of belonging. And now therefore, I, Jeffrey Thomas, Mayor of the City of Monroe, recognize and proclaim November 12th to the 18th, 2023 as Kindness Week in the City of Monroe, and join together with our community to build a kinder and more compassionate place where everyone feels at home and everyone feels they belong. So I'm going to go ahead and invite Director Barnes to come forward. And we could have a picture taken that we could forward to the school board. Councilors. All right. We're going to go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda, and that item would be public hearing. And let me pull up my script. All right. The next item is item number 5.1, Public Hearing for the 2023-2024 Budget Revenue Sources and Mayor's Proposed 2023-2024 Mid-Biennial Budget Adjustment. Before we proceed with the hearing, please note that the rules and procedures that apply to this hearing are available in the agenda packet and on the city's website. To summarize, after the hearing is open, city staff will present a staff report, and council members may ask questions for clarification of staff or wait until another time. The public hearing is now open. For the record, I am informing all parties interested in these proceedings that the city clerk has forwarded to the city council all timely written or otherwise reportable comments that have been submitted regarding the subject matter of the public hearing. At this time, I will ask that Greg Pylund, Finance Manager, provide a written descrip, provide a description of the matter under consideration. Since it's written, we'll bring a dry erase board over for you.
Perfect.
All right, Mr. Pylund, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening, council. So this evening, we have our second public hearing. This is regarding 2023-2024 revenue sources, and the mayor's recommended 23-24 mid-biennial budget adjustment. So just as a reminder, next slide, please. Last week on the 17th was our first public hearing where no public comment was received. Tonight, we have our second public hearing, and then later on this evening, we have our first reading of the budget and property tax ordinances with a proposal adoption on the 14th of November. So first off, start talking about property taxes. Just a reminder, just like the CFP, this must be adopted on an annual basis. It's the second largest revenue source to the general fund outside of sales tax. We have our preliminary new construction assessment at 61 million, which is significantly higher than the 25 million that was originally budgeted for the 23-24 biennial budget. And the IPD or implicit price deflator is 3.67. With that being said, however, the mayor is proposing a 0% increase for property taxes for 2024. So just a breakdown of what the 2024 property tax projection will look like. The current levy is $3,964,090. The only increase will be the added new construction, that 61 million that we talked about, which brings in additional $52,931. So the total 2024 proposed property taxes would be $4,017,021. With taking a 0% increase, though, so it would leave us with 121,000 in banked capacity. And just something we talked about last week as well, but good news where we had a nominal increase of 0.16% in assessed value in 2024. However, Snohomish County is a county overall had a decrease in assessed value in 2024 of 3.63%. There we go. So this is what it looks like for a 2023 property tax bill in the city of Monroe. The city of Monroe's share or what we take in for every dollar of property tax is about 11.54%. So we see that the lion's share goes to the state of Washington, the Monroe School District, the Snohomish Regional Fire Rescue, and then the city of Monroe would be fourth on that list at 11.54%. The remaining goes to the other jurisdictions as well, Snohomish County, Snowy Library, and the Public Hospital District. Next slide, please. So now moving on to the budget side of things. So once again, we talked about last week, really this, the mayor's proposed mid-biennial budget adjustment was a time-to-do true-ups. So the assumptions that we had for the 23-24 budget process did not change for this mayor's proposed 23-24 mid-biennial adjustment. However, we did take into consideration new information that we received, including the June-over-June CPIU, which impacts our collective bargaining agreements and those non-represented staff for the cost of living adjustments. We also looked at our interest. As the Federal Reserve continues to raise interest rates, our current local government investment pool rate is 5.38%. And then we have the council-approved utility rate increase per resolution 22/2019, which has a 3% water, 10% storm, and then no increase for sewer. So by the numbers and the aggregate, all funds, 204,266,226, with ending fund balance targeted at just over 45 million. Through this process, the mayor's proposed mid-biennial budget adjustment, all reserves are fully funded. The general fund has a budget projection of 49,256,000, with ending fund balance for the general fund of just over $3.5 million. So talking about the revenue side, once again, all reserves are fully funded. We had to look at this in adjustment based on the new assessed value and also a true-up of our expenses. We did a review of the large revenue streams that we have, including sales tax and property tax. And then we also looked at utility revenue to make sure that we were aligning with the updated six-year CFP that you'll hear later this evening. And then we did a true-up of the interest earnings across all funds based on that high 5.38% that we're currently receiving from LGIP. Then looking at expenditures, our liability insurance costs have gone up. So we got our bill for 2024 from WCIA, and that was an increase of about 22%. So we need to make those adjustments on the expenditure side. The salary and benefits, we talked about the CPIU being 4.6%, so we were able to update all of the salary and benefits across the entire organization. We also reviewed and adjusted inter-fund transfers based on actual expenses from 2022, including the admin overhead, IT fleet to facilities. And then we did a true-up of the costs associated with debt service for the municipal campus, as we now have the repayment schedule itself. All right, so we kind of outlined in the memo also too, there was actually very few requests. So I think that Becky and the mayor and city administrator Knight also expressed gratitude to the different departments because there was very few requests overall, knowing that we were doing a mid-biennial budget adjustment. So we wanted to break them down into the different categories. We talked about these last week, but these first ones are grant-funded and one-time requests. This is really just a reallocation of money that council has already approved and putting it into the appropriate categories for 2024. This total request is $369,450, but once again, all grant-funded, and this is all one-time and something that council has already approved, receiving those grant funds. The next slide is all one-time costs. These one-time costs total 233,000. It's going to be funded using one-time revenue source, including the increased construction sales tax. And the final slide is $68,879, and this is funded using the ongoing revenue source, which is the increase in property tax due to new construction adding into the base collection for each year. And so, once again, just kind of going back to where we first started. So tonight is our second public hearing and also first reading of the budget property tax ordinance. And then on November 14th, we anticipate the adoption of the budget and property tax ordinance for the 2023-2024. Mr. Mayor, I will turn it back over to you.
All right. Thank you very much. Does any, okay. Do any council members have any clarifying questions of staff at this time? Go ahead, council member Kenny.
Thank you. Forgive me if this is predating me, but could you tell me what the communications contract extension entails?
Yes, so that is 150,000. And Jody, if we can go back two slides. So this was originally entered into at 20, in, at the beginning of 23-24 budget cycle, but it was a strategic decision not to do the full two-year along with the budget because staff wanted to make sure that we got value out of the communications contract itself. So as they've gone through and nearly completed the 2023 contract, staff do see the value and request an extension through 2024 to continue that work with Mojo.
Any other questions at this time? All right, saying none, we'll go ahead and open up. Okay. At this time, I will ask if there are any members of the public who wish to, or council members who wish to speak to this matter. Unless the council wishes to impose a different limitation, there will be a three-minute time limitation on each speaker. Your time will begin after you introduce yourself and provide your association with the city of Monroe. Please be respectful of all speakers and the hearing procedure itself. Please also note that the hearing is an opportunity for you to address the city council. It is not intended to be a question-answer session. So I'm going to turn to the clerk. Do we have anybody who signed up to speak? Okay. I will now turn to the folks in Zoom land. Those of you who are joining us remotely, if you are interested in speaking this evening, please raise your hand using the Zoom hand icon or hit star nine if you're on the phone. All right. Saying nobody interested in speaking to this matter this evening, we will go ahead and move on with the other part of my script, which I'm working on pulling up right now as I'm just rambling. Okay, there we go. Thank you. Do any council members have any additional questions to ask our staff? Okay, I don't see any. At this time, I just want to verify, do we close the public hearing? Yes, okay. So we are going to go ahead and close the public hearing. So this is the conclusion of the public hearing unless there are objections. There are no objections, and the hearing is now closed. And I think that's all that we have for this evening on that item on the public hearing. Thank you, everybody. We're going to go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda. This is public comments. This is time for members of the public to speak to the city council on any issue related to the city of Monroe, except any quasi-judicial matter that is subject to public hearing. Three minutes are afforded to each speaker. If you're interested in speaking this evening and you're here in chambers, please go ahead and raise your hand. Move your hands back and forth, okay? And if you are an attendee remotely, please hit star nine if you're on the phone, or please hit your raise hand icon if you're in Zoom. All right, saying none, we'll go ahead and move on to the consent agenda. Council member Scarborough.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. After a second, motion from council member Scarborough, second from council member Hanford to approve the consent agenda. Discussion on the motion, council member Hanford.
Thank you, Mayor. Could we pull item 7.3 from the consent agenda, please?
Why don't we amend the motion to remove item 7.3? So I understand that you've made a motion to amend the motion to remove item 7.3 from the consent agenda.
That's correct.
Okay, I have a motion to remove item 7.3. Is there a second? Okay, we have a second from council member Fulcher. Any discussion on the motion to remove item 7.3 from the consent agenda to amend the primary motion? Saying none, we'll go ahead and move to vote on the amendment to the motion. All in favor, say aye.
All right.
All opposed. Motion passes 5-0. We're going to go ahead and move to the primary motion as amended. That primary motion would be essentially to approve the consent agenda, items 7.1, 7.2, 7.4, again with 7.3 removed. That being a summary of the motion, is there any discussion on that? Saying none, we'll go ahead and call for the vote. All in favor?
All right.
All opposed? Motion passes five point, five to zero. Council member Hanford, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I, reading through 7.3, I would just love to hear from staff the decision on why we want to continue as opposed to put it out for bid. So.
Okay, sounds good. Council members, would you like to hear that now, or would you like to move it to new business? I don't think there's anything wrong with keeping it in consent. Perfect. Excellent. Then you go ahead and invite our director Roberts up.
Thank you. I'll just move this down to my height. Thanks. If I was next or anything. Yeah, you probably should actually call Megan Ford. That'd be good. Just in case something else comes up in the discussion.
All right. Go ahead, Director.
So council member Hanford, actually, that's one of the reasons why we bring this forward to the council is for that type of decision to be made. So staff doesn't have a specific reason why we would recommend to council to re-initiate a renegotiation of the contract at this point in time. But if council has a different direction for the mayor, then we would certainly pursue that in the future. I will say that putting out an RFP for a garbage contract is, it's a project, and so it would definitely need to be worked into our work plan for the coming years if that's something that council would prefer us to do.
Mayor? Thank you. Any follow-up?
Yeah, thank you. So yes, I received the email. I'm sure all of you also received the email from Recology, which is a company doing services for Dequilla and U-Dub and North Bend and several others. So just curious, you know, why we would just roll this through without giving, you know, opening it up. I'm not saying that my opinion is that we should open it up right now or this year.
Yep.
But it would make sense, I think, to open it up in future years. If it's going to take a lot of staff time and we don't have a plan for that, totally get, understand that. But would definitely be interested in, that's my opinion, would be interested in hearing from other companies and getting open bids.
Good. So before we, and I see the flags up, so we have the ability, so the question that I would have of you, compiling my questionnaire, sure. Are we on a timeline to make this decision? Is this something, for example, that we could put on in upcoming agenda in November so we could have a discussion in a study session under new business or something?
We certainly could, yes. So I, the contract automatically renews every year. So realistically, three years from right now would be when this contract would end, if the council were to cancel it right now. So the only rollover component to it is if we move into next year, then it's going to be three years from, from that point in time, as I understand it. That is off the top of my head. I'd have to actually cross the Ts and dot the Is on that, but I believe that's the way it works.
That's what it looked like.
Yeah.
So, okay.
Well, that's good.
So if, if I were, and again, I know we had a couple council members with flags, but I could see how this could, we could, we could have value with a more robust conversation as part of new business. And if, if you don't have any concerns about it, if we were to bring it back on maybe November 14th or 28th, did I get those dates right? Okay, if we brought it back on the 14th or the 28th of November, council could have a more robust conversation around it and then could provide direction to, to me and staff.
Yes, my only request, Mayor, we actually have some other things going on in the solid waste field that we're going to be bringing back to council here before the end of the year. If we could maybe shoot for December, I think we could probably have something prepared by then, just with the amount of time we have allotted. We want to take care of the bulky waste pickup at individual houses, which is something council talked about earlier this year. That, and we also have a franchise agreement up in the woodlands to clean up. So we're kind of ticking the boxes of things we already had planned, but I think we could work that in December.
Okay. So we will not have anything negative happen to the city if we wait until December to make this decision.
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. So with all that said, council, would there be any objection to having this move forward for a future meeting in December for a presentation and potential decision in December? What's up?
There's two motions that were on this agenda bill, so I just want to make sure that we're pushing both of them forward, or if we're not, such a big action on the second motion, which was to approve the annual.
Do we need to do either of those tonight?
Megan?
Yes.
Did you hear the question?
No, I'm sorry. I did not realize it was directed towards me.
Jody was asking if we could push these motions forward to December if there would be a negative impact to that, rather than doing them tonight.
No, in order to terminate the contract, we just need to do it by the last day of this year. And as you mentioned earlier, it's a three-year process in which to actually switch from Republic Services to another one. Should that be something that we want to look into? So no, there would be no, we just need to make a decision with whether we're going to terminate by the end of the year.
And then as for the rate adjustment, same scenario?
Yes, the rate adjustment, we would just need to let Republic know by the end of the year, more ideally as soon as possible because they are going to be doing some outreach to customers to let them know about the upcoming rate adjustment. So if there is an issue with it sooner than the end of the year, but end of the year at the latest.
Okay, so we can bring this back in December. Okay, as long as the decision is made before the end of the month. All right. So before the end of the year, and you go ahead with council member Fulcher, then council member Scarborough, and then council member Hanford, council member Fulcher, go ahead.
I did not want my flag to be misinterpreted as supportive of all that because I'm wondering if a change in contract should be something about the P3 committee should go over beforehand because I know that this late in the year, saying change in contract, I'm not interested in that. So don't, don't read my flag as support to that idea.
Understood. Thank you. Council member Scarborough, go ahead.
You know, would, to call for estimates from other carriers or providers at this time, would their estimate not have significant, possibly significant increases in three years when we were done with this contract?
Anything's possible. We would have to go through a request for proposals process like we do per procurement policy. Put it out there, and then there would be some negotiation of fees within that process.
So they would know that what we were asking for was, would be a price through years from now?
Yes, they would. Yeah, that's the way this agreement is set up. And yeah, that would be understood going into the process. Yes.
Thank you. And as council member Fulcher noted, even though we're just, what I was trying to do was figure out schedule, you know, where, how far can we wait if the council wanted to have a more robust conversation? Council, of course, can still make the motion that has been recommended to you this evening if that's something you want to do. So again, to council member Fulcher's point, I wasn't, I'm not driving things one way or another. I wanted to know what your ability was to, to look into this more if you wanted to. So a motion still can be made if you like. Council member Hanford, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. So I am in agreement with council member Fulcher that it go to the P3 committee. There's no rush. It's kind of like the firework thing. It's like, it takes so much time to make any changes, waiting till January or February to, for the committee to look at this and putting it off one year is not going to break any, it's not going to be a big deal.
Okay.
So I'm in favor of, of that, and I'm actually going to make the motions because it makes sense. I would like, though, by making these motions, that's not off, setting us off track from the P3 committee looking at these next year, correct?
We're going to verify right now. So if they make these motions and adopt them tonight, just out of the abundance of caution, so that they're not making this decision at the end of next year, is this something that we can load into P3 early next year and have a conversation around this before potentially doing another extension?
Yes, Mayor, you just said so.
Perfect. I just said so. Therefore, it is. Look at what I did. Look at that. Okay. So council member Hanford, you still have the floor if you wanted to make a motion?
Thank you, Mayor. I moved automatically renew the solid waste collection services contract, solid waste contract with Republic Services Incorporated effective January 1st, 2024 through January 1st, 2027.
I have a motion from council member Hanford, a second from council member Fulcher for the requested action 7.3. Council member Hanford, I just want to clarify that your motion was to authorize, as stated on the slide that's before you.
Correct, Mayor. I was reading off of the agenda bill.
Okay, so the motion, as I understand it, and I'll just say it again for the record, the motion was to authorize the automatic renewal of the solid waste collection services contract, solid waste contract with Republic Services Incorporated effective January 1st, 2024 through January 1st, 2027.
That's correct.
Okay, and that motion was from council member Hanford with a second from council member Fulcher. Discussion on the motion. All right, saying none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
All right.
All opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Thank you. Council member Hanford, go ahead.
I moved to approve the annual rate adjustments proposed by Republic Services Incorporated to become effective January 1st, 2024. I moved to approve the annual rate adjustments proposed by Republic Services Incorporated to become effective January first, twenty twenty four. Through January first, twenty twenty five.
Okay, I have a motion from councilmember Hanford, a section from councilmember Kenny for the second requested action under consent item seven point three. Related to the annual rate adjustments. Any discussion on the motion? Saying none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
All right.
All opposed? Motion passes five zero. Thank you, everybody. Thank you very much, Director Roberts. All right, next item on the agenda. Sorry, there's paper fluttering around me. Next item on the agenda is unfinished business. This is item eight point one ordinance number zero two zero twenty twenty three, amending the capital facilities element of the comprehensive plan. And adopting the revised twenty twenty four, twenty twenty nine capital facilities plan first reading with Director Roberts. Director Roberts, go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everybody. How you doing? So this is the the first reading of the ordinance to update the capital facilities plan annually as we do. We talked about this last week where there was a. Absolutely fabulous presentation. I would like to point the council to page one twenty six in the agenda bill. If you have a screen up, if not, it's the transportation. Portion. Of the the funding for the the capital facilities plan. I think it's one twenty six. It's one twenty six on my. My version.
It takes a while to download it.
Oh. Okay, well, there you go. Jody, is there a chance to flip the screen? Okay. Sorry, I didn't realize that would be so difficult. Apologies.
The long, the long documents take a while to download on to our.
Well, I had to keep this presentation as long as Greg's.
Kevin Hanford's out of the room. Shall somebody make a motion appointment to something? Oh.
There we go. Perfect. That's, that is what I'm looking for. Thank you. I apologize for that being so difficult. All this was to make a specific point. And it really has to do with the grade out squares in this budget. So in the transportation side of things, we rely very heavily on grants. And other, other sources of income that can come through various federally or state offered funds. So there are multiple projects in the transportation portion of the capital facilities plan. That are not actually funded. The reason they are there is so that we are eligible for those grants, so we can go out and apply for those things. If they are not in our transportation system plan. And our our tip, as it were, that Scott comes and adopts every year. We can't get money for those projects. So I just wanted to point that out to the council that a lot, oftentimes we look at that CFP and we think, oh, these are the projects we're going to do. That may or may not be the case based on the funding that is available to the city of Monroe for those projects. Mayor, that concludes what was a way too long presentation.
All right. All right, you get it. You get an A minus for the way too long part of the, all right. That's the end of the presentation. I turn to the council. There's a requested action on the screen for your consideration. Councilmember Kenny, go ahead.
Okay, I'm going to take this on here. All right, I moved to, I moved to accept first reading ordinance number zero two zero. Slash twenty twenty three, amending the capital facilities element of the Monroe Comprehensive Plan. Adopting a revised and updated six year capital facilities plan for the years twenty twenty four through twenty twenty nine. In a manner that is consistent with the city's twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four budget. Adopting supporting legislative findings, providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
I have a motion from councilmember Kenny and a second from councilmember Foulter for the request action under. Eight point one unfinished business. Any discussion on the motion? All right, seeing none, we'll call for the vote. All in favor?
All right.
All opposed? Motion passes five zero. Thank you. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is new business item nine point one. This is ordinance number zero one nine twenty twenty three, amending MMC three point five two oh seven oh. Park impact fees for first reading with Mr. Swanson. Good evening.
Good evening.
Your notes are on that little thing? Want to borrow my glasses?
So similar to what Scott Peterson presented a few months ago with the traffic impact fees. We have the same provision in our parking back fees and what that is essentially. Every year under our, it's MMC three fifty two point zero seven zero E. Requires us to amend, adjust the impact fees annually and our deadline is January first of the following year. And what we adjust that by is the. This fries are failing me, construction cost index. And you'll see in your packet, and I actually just cut and paste this right out of the traffic impact fee agenda bill. Scott Peterson was so nice to go through and look at the rolling average for the past five years and come up with the six point. Six point two percent increase. And so you'll see also I I put a graph in there showing what the old fees were and what the new fees. Our proposed fees are with that six point two percent multiplier. And then just to give you a heads up, you'll probably see here at the next, next month. The RCWs did change in how we're supposed to review and analyze our impact fees. We don't know what impact that that's actually going to have on our existing analysis. So we're going to be looking at that here in the in the very near future. So. You see a item come through on the consent agenda, that's for bringing onboard a consultant to help us review that and then. And then probably if necessary, change it beginning next year.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions or emotion? Councilmember Kenny? Oh, I'm sorry. I was looking at your red light. Councilmember Scarborough, I saw your hand go up.
So. We're proposing a six point two percent raise in our impact fees. And we don't know if this new thing you just mentioned could be another percentage of increase.
We don't know what it is right now. And so that's what we're, we took, we took a look at the RCW, we're bringing it back to the same group that helped us do the analysis for our current impact fees. And to see what, if any, that'll change. And then so we'll, we'll go back from there. And then if needed at that time, we can kind of continue that. I think three or four meeting discussion that we had before about what we want to charge and percentage wise and those kind of things.
So if that was a prohibitive percentage, we could lessen this six point two?
Not necessarily the six point two, but the overall percentage that we charge for the impact fee. So similar to what we did last time. Where we were looking at the difference between the different types of development, single family versus multifamily, I believe is. The one that we had to.
I guess my question is, do we want to approve it? Is this the first reading?
First reading, yes.
Would we want to approve this six point two before we know what the next amount is?
We won't have that information back to you before the deadline for updating our impact fees passes.
Before, before the second reading?
No, before January first, if when according to our, our existing code, we have to have our impact fees adjusted by January first. So we have essentially. Coming up, we have to adjust our impact fees by that date. We won't have the information on whether it does or does not impact until after January first. And and there's nothing to say that once those, that information comes to light, we can't revisit this either. And so we're not locked in, I should say.
Thank you. All right. Any further questions or emotion? That's my report. Sorry, I saw, I saw the red light before. I was thinking red light.
Um. The mobile homes thing, how often do we get a mobile home in town and what would make the substantial? Well, actually, it's the same difference as the single family, but. So I guess my question is a little. Not essential now, but how often do we get mobile homes in town?
It's been a while. I don't think during my. From like two thousand seventeen to that five year period, I can't say that we ever permitted one. Prior to that, from like my two thousand six to two thousand twelve.
I remember that.
I believe I permitted three of them, maybe, maybe a few more than that.
So why, why do we have to distinguish the difference? Because isn't it just a single family detached?
It is, and there's, there are RCWs that that talk about trading essentially. Manufactured home, just like a single family residential unit. I I think it's more kind of tradition. We've always distinguished it.
Oh, the good old, we always did it. Okay. That answer works for so many things.
There may even been a time where we offered a actually a different impact fee for the manufactured homes as opposed to the stick mill single family two. And so. I'm trying to remember. That wasn't recently. I want to say that was like two thousand eight timeframe, possibly.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, because that's what I would imagine. And I'm sure, sure this is, this is not the place to address that. I I realize that, but.
We're going to.
Part of our cleaning up things, you know, might involve. That right there, suggestion. Okay, other than that, since I have the floor, is there a motion to be made?
You haven't, you have the floor if you wanted to make a motion.
Excellent. I will do that. Okay, I, oh. Sorry, Jody. I know you do this for a reason. So. I moved to accept as first reading ordinance number zero one nine two zero two three, amending chapter three point five two MMC park impact fees, updating the Sid's. Cities Codified Transportation Impact Fee Schedule pursuant to MMC three point five two point zero seven zero. Providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Hanford's second.
I have a motion from councilmember Foulter, a second from councilmember Hanford for the requested action and new business item nine point one. Discussion on the motion. Councilmember Hanford, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I was just going to comment on what you said. My assumption would be that. To make it easy for the layperson as they're going in to apply or looking up to see how much it would cost to do things like that. If it's spelled out specifically mobile home. Then there are not. It just makes it easier. That would just be my assumption, but. That's all.
Thank you. Councilmember Scarborough?
Okay, previous. Presentation, we didn't. Raise any. Taxes, any percentage, but we are going to raise. The impact fee. So we're going to get it one way or another, or this is an impact fee based on new construction.
Correct, correct. So this is just like our, our transportation impact fee in the park impact fee are similar. So what this is, is this is a fee that's charged to new development. To offset the impact of, in our case, parks. So as opposed to them coming in and using an existing system that the existing residents already paid for. They pay their essentially proportionate share to the impact fee for the new development.
Thank you.
You're right.
Any other discussion on the motion? All right, saying none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
All right.
All opposed? Motion passes five zero. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is new business item, item number nine point two. This is ordinance number zero one seven twenty twenty three. In ordinance of the city of Monroe, Washington, fixing the amount of real. And personal property taxes to be levied by the city for calendar year twenty twenty four, providing for severability and establishing an effective date for first reading. I was going to say councilmember Highland.
That sounds good. I like that. I like.
Mr. Highland, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening once again, council. So just as a reminder, property taxes were discussed. We had two public hearings, the first on the seventeenth and the last one earlier this evening. And the mayor's proposal is for a zero percent increase for property tax for twenty twenty four. Mr. Mayor, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilmembers, any questions for staff or a. A motion, councilmember Davis, I'm just going to start calling on you. Red light or not?
I'll go ahead and move to accept as first reading ordinance number zero one seven. Slash twenty twenty three, ordinance of the city of Monroe, Washington, fixing the amount of real. And personal property taxes to be levied by the city for calendar year twenty twenty four. Providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
I have a motion from councilmember Davis, a second from councilmember Scarborough. For the requested action is shown in new business item number nine point two. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes five zero. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is item, new business item number nine point three. This is ordinance number zero one eight twenty twenty three, in ordinance of the city of Monroe, Washington. Adjusting the biennial budget for the fiscal period beginning January first, twenty twenty three and ending December thirty first, twenty twenty four. Providing for severability and establishing an effective date for first reading, Mr. Highland.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and once again, good evening, council. So just like with the property taxes, the mayor's proposed mid biennial budget adjustment for twenty three and twenty four was presented on the seventeenth. And also again, earlier this evening in our second public hearing. The mayor's proposed fully balanced budget adjustment also ensures that all reserves are fully funded. With that, Mr. Mayor, I have concluded my report.
Thank you, councilmember Davis.
I'll move to accept as first reading ordinance number zero one eight slash twenty twenty three. An ordinance of the city of Monroe, Washington. Adjusting the biennial budget. For the fiscal period beginning January first, twenty twenty three and ending December thirty first, twenty twenty four. Providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
I have a motion from councilmember Davis, a second from councilmember Foulter as shown under the requested action. For nine point three under new business. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes five zero. Thank you. All right, next item on the agenda is councilmember reports. Councilmember Kenny? I'm mixing it up.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Gosh, let's see. I attended the school board meeting and watched Molly in Action last night, virtually. It's always great to see the hard work that they are doing for our school district and the community. So thank you. Also went to senior center Cowboy Bingo at the senior center on Saturday night, which was loads of fun, great fundraiser for that group. And went over on purpose because I've heard about Crooked Label. As a new business in town and wanted to go check it out. And luckily, Dan, the proprietor. Was still there and got a chance to meet him, talked to him a little, introduced myself as a council member. Asked him how it's been doing business in the city and he was very complimentary and. What a wonderful business, great guy, really enjoyed talking with him. And realized I need to do that more often. Just walk into a place and introduce myself and see how are things going? Share your thoughts. So that was really informative and a good experience. Have some good news. It appears that the Buck Houses on Ann Street, those two old homes I've been working really hard to save, may be saved. I've been working with Nickel Brothers and we have a local couple that would like to repurpose them. I can't talk too much about it right now, but it's looking really good. So that is a big win for the community and for me personally. So thank you.
Congratulations. Councilmember Foulter?
Nothing tonight.
All right, thank you, councilmember Davis. Okay, thank you, councilmember Scarborough. Thank you, councilmember Hanford.
Well, since councilman Gamble's gone, somebody's got to talk about football. I gotta tell you, that was great to see social media that Monroe Bearcats completely obliterated. Snohomish School. So. That was really nice to see because I've been the game where it's been the opposite. That was very neat. And that's all I have to say about football.
Thank you. Thank you. Perfect. We're going to go and move on to the next one on the agenda. Sorry, my neighborhood, we have people from the Snohomish School District because the Snohomish School District is now part of the city. So. I'm thinking about at some point in the future, we're going to have disagreements with neighbors across the street. All right, thank you. On that note, we're going to go ahead and move on to Jaka for the Public Works Department reports. So Director Roberts.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening again.
You can lower the microphone if you like.
It's more fun to stand on my tippy toes.
I know the feeling.
Sorry. The report is in your packet. The one thing I would like to point out in the report, which I thought was a bit different and unique for us. The city of Monroe Public Works Department won the golden hard hat this year from the APWA, so the American Public Works Association of Washington. It will be shortly proudly displayed in the Ops Building back on seven six nine Village Way. And you'll see some pictures in your packet there of some of our staff who were forced to put on the hat for those pictures, but did so willingly. In any case, kind of a nice celebration of of the social media presence that we've put out there over the last few years. I've been working really hard on doing that regularly. And including that information in Monroe this week and other, other resources, just getting the name of Public Works out there. That concludes my report.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions? Councilmember Scarborough?
I don't know.
Thank you. We'll have staff follow up on that. Thank you, councilmember Scarborough. Anything further? Okay, thank you. Next report we have is the community development report with Director Bailey, Director Bailey.
I am going to adjust.
I am going to adjust.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Lance. Happy birthday to you and many more.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Why? Why wouldn't you want that experience? I mean, this is going out like all on the airwaves.
I know. We have four people watching.
Thank you very much. I do appreciate you. I'm not a big birthday person.
Two of them are not staff members.
I don't know if they're seeing any birthday or not. Where was I? So on the the community, it's in your it's in your packet, and I just wanted to cover a couple of highlights. One, we talked about doing a project development map for a while. That is something that would go on our website. It's fully live now, so I encourage everyone to go to Community Development and go to current projects. And there's a link, and it's an interactive map. You can see locations of where current projects are. There are links on if you just if you go to the map, you can click on those locations and it'll give you a link for additional project information. So a number of things, it allows people just to look and see where things are happening in town. When we have questions or if you get a question from someone about a project, I would recommend sending them there and might be able to get their questions answered with the project information associated with that. So it's taken us a little while to get it done. But it's we've it, I think that it is operational and going to be very helpful. So I encourage everybody to take a look at it. A couple of highlights for projects. I know everyone read through the report in detail, and you may have noticed we actually issued zero single family resident permits this past month. But to counter that, we have a number of projects that are coming our ways, just a little bit of a lull in terms of some of the subdivisions that have been finishing up building. Garibaldi, which is a ninety unit subdivision, has preliminary approval, and they're working on getting final approval. And it's it's as you go up Chain Lake Road. And I appreciate the the good news about the Buck houses. We just in this that same project or that same parcel Riverside Station, which is a a three story mixed use building that will include sixteen apartments and commercial space on the first floor. We've just approved site plan, did site plan approval for that just yesterday. So hopefully, everything is coming together with that. And with that, I will conclude unless anyone has any questions.
All right. Thank you very much. Any questions or comments for the birthday boy? I'm sorry, Director Bailey. Go ahead, Director. I'm sorry, go ahead. Go ahead, Director Kenny.
Um, I did have just one question for you in looking through this. You know, I read these. I really do. I think they're so interesting. The First Airfield LLC under new business applications. Could you elaborate on that for me, please?
Oh, my gosh, where did you see that?
It's under new business applications, third down underneath some business called Sales Bump Inc., which I'm also curious about.
It is. Oh, I'm trying to remember the exact business, but it is it's one. There are a number of businesses that are located out at First Airfield. And I don't know if this is the one that does the there's a business out there that that makes tents for the military. And that might that might be them. I apologize that I didn't.
No, it's okay. I was just curious. Thank you.
But there's there's more than just the the airport businesses out there. There's a there's as you drive by, there's two or three buildings, and they they all have separate businesses out there as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Director Bailey? Councilmember Scarborough, go ahead.
Yes. But when? I don't know. It's a we're in the process of doing a couple of different applications. They're they're going to be located in the essentially which is parking lot or outer parking lot for Fred Meyer. So on the the side closest to highway two. Yep.
All right. Any other questions? All right. Thank you very much, Director Bailey.
Thank you for the happy birthday. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Next item on the agenda then is our Police Department report with Chief Charlie. Chief Charlie?
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council. It's hard to follow the gentleman from South Carolina and, oh, North Carolina. I'm sorry for that. So but he would be happy to entertain birthday salutations after council meeting in the local place. His his treat. You have before you the council packet and everything's included. I would point out a couple of items. As you're all aware, we had the burglary at the Armageddon Arms last month. That was a significant event for our community, but I would like to relate to you that significant progress has been made. And I believe we'll have a resolution very soon. So that's good news in that area. As for Travelers Park, Parks and the Police Department are aware of that and trying to keep on top of that and remediate any problems that arise from those issues. So we are aware. Thank you, Councilmember Scarborough. Good news about Wendy's. And then I just point out a couple other things. We've hired some quality people over the last month, including Xylee Dale. She's familiar and known here in Monroe and worked for local business here in the area. So we're very happy to have her onboard. Her bio is included in this. And we also hired a Wyatt Larson, who began his career with Seattle Police Department. And he's actually out on the road now and starting his training and simulation to our department. And if there's no other questions, that is it.
And Chief, how many vacancies do we have right now?
Currently, we have one sworn vacancy. Okay, so.
So just letting you all know that we have done a really good job at recruiting and retaining personnel. And I just expressed my appreciation, Chief, for your leadership, council for your investment with our police department. So job well done.
Thank you. Thank you, council.
All right. Next item on the agenda then is Merit Administrator Reports, and I will turn to Mr. Worthen.
Okay, Monday ten thirty, six thirty PM, we have our Boards, Commissions, Committee Recognition Social. That's located at the Monroe Coordination Center on the old campus. And then followed by seven PM, our City Council Special Meeting with the Parks Planning Commission, EDAB and JASAB for the Comprehensive Plan Regulatory Overview with Community Development. And followed by Executive Session for Property Acquisition Endeavor Night will be back. So I appreciate you all putting up with the B team, me, for the few weeks when she was gone.
The Ben team?
The Ben team, correct. Yeah, exactly. Thank you. And then.
I threw you off, didn't I?
I saw a flag.
Yeah, we'll go back to it. And you kicked me under the table because I miss him sometimes.
Eleven seven is election night, and we historically canceled that. So there will be no Public Safety Commission, Public Safety Committee meeting or regular study session.
Thank you. Councilmember Scarborough? You won't be able to make it Monday. Okay, how many councilmembers? Somebody will give you a ride. But not a fourth one.
Yeah.
All right. Cool. Thank you, Councilmember Scarborough. I look forward to seeing you on Monday. And is everybody else going to be able to make it who's here? Okay, excellent. All right. Go ahead. Any any other questions for this?
And then we're back on the fourteenth Legislative Affairs Meeting is canceled. We do have a TBD meeting, Approval of Minutes, Public Hearing, New Business Budget Adoption for the TBD. And then back for at seven for a regular business meeting. Police and Firefighters Appreciation Week. Appreciating Chief and Councilmember Fisher, Public Hearing for the twenty three twenty four budget mid biennial adjustment, Consent Agenda, Paints and Bills, adopting the budget adjustments, and then Final Action, Ordinance Amending Code for Planning Commission Meeting Locations by Jody. And some reports, and that's it.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Foulter. Nice to see the flag part way up.
Yeah, it was. Um, I have written on my calendar for the fourteenth. It's not a council thing, but it's the grand opening at Fairfax. Is that still a thing?
I think it is.
Oh, hey, I'm ahead of myself. Okay.
Awesome. Thank you.
So any other questions on the extended agenda? All right. City Administrator Report.
We'll start from the bottom up. We'll talk the fourteenth to eleven. There's a grand opening at Fairfax Military Program. That's one hundred seventy ninth adjacent to the hospital and the temporary city hall. Back at the top, Boards and Commission Committee Recognition Social at six thirty, where three councilmembers are driving together, joint meeting on the Monday, October thirtieth.
But no more than.
But no more than three, correct. And then the joint meeting for the comp plans immediately after the recognition.
I'm just full of questions tonight. There had been a question if councilmembers should bring snacks for the recognition thing. Are we still doing that? Is that a thing?
Go ahead.
We have some like snacks planned.
Or beverage.
All right. Any other questions on the City Administrator Report? All right. Okay, Mayor's report. I think the big thing I just want to share, and I did send you all an email. Eric Wilkinson from King Five came and did a report on a recovery center. I was able to take some time off to attend. There was somebody there that was graduating. He interviewed her for maybe twenty five, thirty minutes. I'm thankful that the story that came out didn't include me or Rachel, sorry, Rachel. Because the what was shared from the person who graduated was just so touching. And I mean, really, I mean, honestly, I began tearing up with the story that I heard. She talked about her background and about how her parents had both suffered from chemical dependency and her mother had passed away. And then she started using, because of the way our system is set up here. She learned that the people were advising her, she had to get in trouble with the law to be able to get moved up on the list for drug treatment. And somebody recommended that she use fentanyl because if you have fentanyl in your system, there's a higher probability that you'll get drug treatment. Whether that's true or not, I don't know, but she did that. I she went into the recovery center, was not able to get the help she needed with the insurance that she had available to her. And again, she doesn't have private health insurance like some of us may have or have the ability to afford other forms of health insurance. So, you know, she didn't have that sort of support, and she does have a kid at home. But for the fact that the city of Monroe stepped in and had funding available. She she was asked a question, where would you be today? And her response was either still, you know, either still out there on the street doing drugs or dead. And to hear that story, she has a kid, to hear her history and to hear the hoops she felt she needed to hop through to get help in this country really underscores part of the problem that we have here in our country with not helping people out with basic health issues. And even as we run into people who talk to us about what are we going to do about people who are unhoused or people who have chemical dependency or drug issues. Even when we go out and contact people, we still have the issue with there being long waiting lists or difficulty with people getting the help they need when they want it. And just hearing her story, it's one of those things that I hear these things from different people, but to hear it directly from somebody who went through that, it it really reinforced the fact that here in Monroe, we're doing the right thing. And I wish that more cities, I wish that our state, I wish more resources were available to help everybody that actually wanted the help. And you know, thank you. And I know that we have funny, we have funding, we have money from Snohomish County to help out with this. So thank you, Snohomish County. I know that we're getting money from the state of Washington through the Association of Washington Cities. So thank you. And I know that we have funding that came to this from our council. Thank you. And I know that we have staff that have been working very hard, plus JASAB and board members that have helped put this together. Thank you. So again, just sharing that with you because I was there to hear it, and I just wanted to hear from my heart to yours, an honest, sincere thank you. That's all I have this evening, unless there's objection. We are adjourned. We're adjourned. Have a great week, everybody.